How are you doing?
Good.
You going to the Land Use Change 50ers tomorrow?
Yeah.
How'd you get that?
Uh, American had a Manchester.
Where you getting it from?
Uh, Charlotte, going down, DCA coming back.
Isn't that unbelievable? It's gonna be going nice for 600 miles to keep where I'm going. Used to be nine stops. Boston and Memphis.
Yep. Yeah.
Keith, what's your name?
Uh, the name of the folks who do broadcasting.
Townstream.
Townstream.
Townstreams.
They're right on here.
I believe if you were my coffee cup, I'd write them put mine here.
Have you seen this? No.
What are they, uh, what are they doing there? The airport?
Yeah, we're doing a terminal expansion. And they do, uh, baggage management systems. Uh, redoing the entire, uh...
Cause they just spent two years tearing it down.
I think the base might be bigger.
Two years.
And then they're still doing lobby, uh, screening. They don't enter any line screening system. Yes. But my guys, my guys helped me get out. You think that this one part of building will lose the baggage? You think we're gonna rip that out, do a new building? You think $2 million is enough to cover the baggage? I know. It's gonna fall through.
There you can.
60, 50, 60 seconds. $2 million, like, good.
Can buy. Is, um, Kent coming in?
Um, I haven't heard, no. I think they were just, um, just quiet. I think one of the vendors said just to mention that he wants to start companies. And then she was, um, wanted to go pay and gave one, um, the previous front charge. But she wants to make sure that that would be the same.
Okay, but is, are they gonna come in and request particular dates?
Oh, I haven't heard of dates. I'm sorry, they last two.
They have a patch, so...
Yes. Yeah.
Alright.
Catch me up.
What's that? That? Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that. Uh, alright, it's 7 o'clock. Will, uh, call for order for Tuesday, June 14th, uh, in select board? Uh, first item on the agenda. Garden Club. How are you guys?
Good. How are you guys?
Good. So, what do you?
Well, we had originally, somebody asked for a table or bench. And I remember in the staff area that we did last year.
Across from Selasfield? Yep.
And we just came to do the town clerk's office in Assabill's. For all to do that. We just did, we said we did an application.
Yeah, we did an application and there was a request to do a bench down behind the land. Uh, we, we basically devised an application. Provides discretion for the board to accept or reject. And again, it's, there's no arbitrage rule. Our concern at the time was, we really didn't want 52 benches down by the land.
That's your lead.
Yep.
So we're just, I'm here to just see. Are you involved with the benches and the number and the path, is it?
Well, technically, it's town land, right?
Yes.
Technically, uh, the answer would be yes. Not that I think I wanna be involved. But, um, uh, my suggestion is, is that whoever it is, they fill out an application. We'll, uh, review it, put it on the agenda at some point, have them come in, talk to us about what they wanna do. Um, I would certainly, I don't know if you have concerns about this or not, or...
Well, subsequently, the person had a withdrawn request. And I just think for the future, we need to let Snow.
Yep.
Putting a bench, is that an application just for memorial bench? Could we just put a bench there without any application?
Could the garden club put a bench in? I don't see why not. You, you, you guys have been, um, tasked with maintaining that. Um, I think it'd be good just to notify us, just, you know, as a courtesy. But if you guys were to put in a bench, I, I don't think it'd be any... We'll have to put two benches.
Well, if you burn one, maybe...
It, 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 as, as long as it's, it's, I'm not paying for it and therefore, you know, then it would be definitely us. But I, I think if you just notify us, would, would be...
And we've burned one because of plastic film recycling.
Oh, nice.
And we have the opportunity to burn a second.
Oh, great.
So... So that's what, that's what the bench would be if that's finished?
Mm-hmm.
48 minutes? Um, no memorial or anything on it, just a, a bench? So, that's, we just wanted to check to make sure that we were...
Appreciate that.
All are ducks in a row.
No, no, no. You guys have any comments or questions about any of this? I mean, just trying to keep it easy and just making sure everyone knows what everybody else does. You guys are doing a great job with that.
Oh, how nice.
And the gar, I, I noticed the gardens, they, um, on the corner of the Sallows lawn, they took the tree down and didn't do any damage, which was great.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, they did a great job.
They really did.
I stopped to talk to the guy while we were doing it. It is, yeah.
Yeah, that's a southern flower potter when he's really, when he's just going to seeds.
Is that what it's called? Keep the birds up?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not aesthetic, uh...
But don't lose focus. Great. Uh, yeah, any questions, just let us know.
I just wanted to also mention, last November, I had sent one of myself, Tim Selas. I know you've communicated.
Yep. Regular, yep.
Yeah, and I had sent him a, a long email with pictures about what he was doing and, yeah, just to keep him informed. And he just sent that, uh, nice thing, and he was beautiful, and then his father was young.
Yeah. Nice.
Much appreciation and admiration.
Um, Tim had indicated to me last time we communicated, which had been a month ago. Lucy Vale may be up this summer. So, um, just keep an eye out if you wanna, if you wanna try to get into her. You may have also noticed there's some stakes down in the field. That's, um, I was out there, uh, over the weekend. Cause we're gonna try to do the seasonal hockey report.
Oh, wow.
But we need to grade. So, um, we're gonna try to do that, uh, towards the fall in plants and grass. And then hopefully by winter, we'll be able to put the report up, so...
And that's kind of working?
Yeah, it's like two thirds of the way down. You'll see, I, I put some stakes in to basically measure out the, the area of the hockey report, so...
Awesome.
So, if you see those, that's what goes with it.
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you guys. You're welcome to stay. Alright, uh, next up, um, fristless abatements. So, last week, uh, we talked about the situation regarding the fristless lot. Hope you know that you reached out to Derek, uh, on this matter. I think we just need to figure out what, if anything, we wanna do with respect to the abatement. Any comments or questions per the last meeting and follow-up?
Well, it seems like there was, uh, he was insinuating in the letter there wasn't a whole lot we could do. Wasn't filed in time and how far back we can go, right?
Um, yeah, technically, we're not obligated to, if we...
Right.
At the last meeting.
Yep.
You know, it's, it, um, and, and obviously, going back to 2006.
The thing I saw about, and I still get it, didn't, I get an answer from Derek when I asked him about it, and the follow-up to his email. There was a date issue, the timing issue of the, uh, application for the abatement. But if you look at the RSA, it says that you can, the select board can determine the abatement on the basis of their select board decisions, paraphrasing, and previous select boards. So I said, Derek, I said specifically, does this give us authority to go how far back? And he did not respond.
Correct.
So I don't know whether the, the authority insists to, if you wanted to argue with an alternative, to look back to the beginning and then make a determination, or whether you're precluded by some statutory portion. I'm not sitting there alone looking back for the previous year. But I think that date timed by the, the 1st of April, was it?
Yes.
Uh, applies only to the taxes from the previous year.
To the prior year, yeah. Well, uh, do you wanna wait until we get some response from Derek, uh, with respect to the second question? Uh, again, I think it's, it's very clear that we're not required to do it, given the, um, timing of the abatement request, as well as, um, the timeliness of the abatement.
I would like to...
Versus the, versus the 17, 15, 16, 17 years ago.
Yeah, I would like to get clarification on that aspect of it. And, and the other part is, if I understand this correctly, would you have that initial parcel, like in both frontage and total acreage? That when the, what is now the green zone is gonna be developed into the housing project, that you would acquire the initial frontage and acreage? And it seems to me there are the cognizance or documentation in somewhere, paper trail, saying, one, this comes through, this will be a buildable lot, or the document originally was set for that build. So what I'm trying to say, is established, clean hands, or lack of thereof?
No, so, so, uh, understand that when the application for the development went in, the easement area on, that runs on that property from the end of the road, end of Pauls Mill Road into the Greenway, the Cascasack, was designed to be the access road to the development. And if that was built out as a road, it would be out of frontage. Okay? In addition, from the acreage standpoint, um, the development, uh, that was finalized, um, was under a, uh, conservation plan, doesn't apply on a single family lot. So between the road not being built, and it no longer being part of a conservation development, it didn't, it doesn't qualify as a buildable lot.
So there was never a case where he was going to acquire?
No, nope.
Okay.
That wasn't, that wasn't gonna be necessary. Because that, that frontage was gonna be provided by the road that would be built, um, as part of the development.
Okay.
So it would've been a, a valid lot if the road was built in the conservation development. But because neither of those happened, it's no longer a buildable lot.
And I think there would've been some cognizance on the owner's part about that, when the gates weren't met, when the, was it tripped?
Uh, in terms of the fristlesses?
Yeah.
Um...
I know it's postulation, but if you've got a piece of property that you have, and you wanna build on, and then all of a sudden, conditions aren't met?
Uh, I, I think a lot of it has to do with the timing, because if they built it, uh, if they purchased the lot before the town ended up turning around and buying up the development, then they were buying a lot in what was going to be a developable lot under the plan.
Agreed.
Now, whether, when that changed, I, I don't know the, I don't recall the timing of the Greenway versus the fristless, um, acquisition. So I, I couldn't tell you what they would or would not, or should or should not have known. It may be they bought it under the, under the presumption of this will be a buildable lot in that development. But when the development then turned into the Greenway, the Cascasack, the Cascasack Greenway, it no longer became a buildable lot. Anyways, we'll, uh, we'll defer this, defer their discussion to Derek and at least a response to your question. Um, I don't think anyone's impressed. There's no, uh, timing to that. Uh, contradances. It looks like Kent Lawrence is gonna try to bring the contradances back. At some point, I'm sure he'll come in on dates to utilize time off of the contradances. Just as a, you know, uh, in, in the prior years, back in 2018, 2017, 2019, when they were doing those here, um, we went back and forth about setting a rental charge based on attendance. I think Kent would probably wanna revisit that and make sure that that's still valid. Cause he don't make a whole lot of money. Typically, Kent just was worried about covering, um, covering the cost of the van more than anything else. Um, and the rental charge we needed into that, we needed to do that, so... Just be aware of it, I'm sure we'll have a proper discussion with, uh, Kent. Alright. Uh, Health and Human Services. Oh, were you going to take a look at that?
I did make a copy of it, sorry, my apologies on that.
So, is, is it proposal, the ones in blue?
Yep. And the map does come up, probably, sure.
Uh, I have no questions. Whatever we do here. Alright, I'll, uh, make a motion to accept the Health and Human Services contributions per the schedule from, uh, Mr. Harman.
Sorry, Tom.
On favor?
Aye.
Yeah, uh, I'll, yeah. Uh, Deputy Treasurer appointments. Um, there's a vacancy for Deputy Town Treasurer. Tom Morgan, uh, has volunteered to, uh, become Deputy Treasurer. Any questions about Tom, Ross's responsibilities?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to, uh, appoint Tom, uh, Morgan as the Deputy Town Treasurer.
I'll second.
Second by Michael. On favor?
Alright.
Aye. Town policies. So we have two proposed town policies. One, the credit card policy, the other one, the IT policy. Briefly look at these, but I would, I would defer this until next meeting. There's no, no marshmallows. We already picked out the stuff that I, um, take some time, go through them.
I'm in term.
I'll, do you mind, we defer to them?
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, great, yeah.
So we'll defer those until next meeting. Proper review. Uh, veteran exemption. There's an application here for a veteran's tax credit. Does that cover it?
Yes.
Yep, correct. Take a look. It is charged from the back. Any questions, concerns, issues?
Nope.
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the veteran's tax credit application for the marshal. It's likely from Kobe. On favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Ah, abatements. There's two. Current use change abatements. One from map 208, lot 15-2. The other from map 210, lot 21. Uh, these are, one is for current use change tax bill of an incorrect amount. The second one from department tax bill for tax against parcel. Any questions about these?
No.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve both of the abaters' performance.
Second.
On favor? Alright. Thank you. Next up is Officer Call appointment. Uh, so, um, Officer Call would, uh, be fill, uh, filling a position with the Police Department. He's the last focal position that we have in the department currently. Uh, he's passed it back on checks. And I believe, if I remember correctly, we're starting August 1st? I believe. Uh, any questions about appointing Officer Call? I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of James Christopher Call to the police department.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, you? So there's a, uh, land use change tax warrant. This is for the last, uh, lot that was sold on Heath Drive. What's, the remaining is gonna be less than 10 acres, so it would roll in the current use? Or is this, or is this lot in current, this is the lot that's in current use?
This is the last lot.
Yeah, so this lot is coming out and it will come out, uh, and be sold as an independent lot, which would, um, take this lot out of current use. Uh, this is 10419? Yeah, 10419, yep. Which is the last lot on the circle there on Heath Drive. There'll be an 18.31 acre parcel behind this lot and a few other lots on Heath that will abut the rail trail in the back, as well as the fishing game property that runs from basically the Cascasack River along with the Cascasack River up to the rail trail. Um, it's anticipated that that 18.31 acre lot will go to the town. So we may be acquiring that, uh, in the future. But this is really dealing with the, uh, that single lot, the last single lot that's getting sold on Heath. Any questions? I'll make a motion to accept the land use change warrant, uh, as, uh, proposed.
I'll second.
Second by Kobe. On favor?
Aye.
Um, do you have the copy of the sheriff's sale agreement? I think you did.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Yep.
So, um, the sheriff's sale for the lot next to the school took place on June 7th. Uh, the John and Kim Luthman were the winning bidders for the property. Under the terms of the, uh, sale, uh, they're required to close within 10 days, give the opportunity, uh, to extend that 21 days if the town agrees, under the town. Uh, they're working diligently, as I understand, given the conversation with Derek, to, uh, get all the issues resolved. Uh, what we need to do is, uh, basically sign off on the sale agreement and then, uh, uh, give authority to Derek to extend up to 21 days if necessary to get to the close.
Sure.
Any questions about the option, the augmentation, the extension?
No, no.
No? Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the sale agreement to, and to, uh, provide, uh, serving authority to extend the closing date for the sale of the property.
Second.
Uh, all on favor?
Aye.
Next item, uh, the, we received a notice from the Law Offices Department in Hippel. This is in regards to, uh... Oh, we have a copy of that, I'm sorry. There's a copy of a prior correspondence. Chee Hyung had, um, received a notice regarding, as well as the state of, uh, Kate O'Brien. And the intent by, um, some of the individuals involved, uh, to become executor of the estate, which the town is not going to. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you get your hand in this?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, no.
That's the, what's the date of that one?
November, yeah, September. So this will be helpful for you just to be aware of the situation. There's, you know, been threatened lawsuits on the town with respect to the ordinance, application of the ordinance. You know, there's been discussions about suing individual members of, and prior members of police force, which includes Kate O'Brien, which was there, and presumably the estate. So this, just to make you aware of it, any questions? Let me know, but this is all driven by the picketing ordinance that came into play back in...
2020.
Yeah, 2020. Just make sure you're aware of that. Newfield Veterans webpage, this was something you wanted to do?
Yeah, so in preparation for the town anniversary next year, we've had some discussions on celebration and thought it'd be a good idea if we set up a webpage under the Newfields homepage, under the resources tab. We'd like to add a tab in there for Newfields veterans. I'll go through and I'll put a, I'll put a proposal as to what it's going to look like out to everybody. So you guys will have an opportunity to look at it, but I think it'd be good if we can, you know, maybe things gather all of the veterans information in one, in one place and keep it updated for everybody and then... So, so next year, we'll redo celebration, we'll make sure we're counting for everybody and that type of thing, but it's also to keep them updated on events that are happening in town. I know the school, on Veterans Day usually has the veterans over there. I don't know if everybody gets notified on that one. So I mean, I think there are probably a few times a year where, you know, we could just have something for the veterans in town, and we have so many in town. You know, and I can tell you haven't put all the signs out the last few years. You know, and trying to keep it straight.
Yeah.
It's been an issue, so I think this will go a long way and I just want to get it talked about and see if there are going to be any issues with it before we go ahead and put a whole proposal together.
Would the website be basically where they, they can actually input information or edit information and give them access to do that? Or is it more of a resource for them to go and get information as opposed to apply it?
Both.
Okay, great.
So, and then the other, the other thing that I would look at is a sign authorization for veterans to get into that. I don't think that would be an open page for, for the public. I think it would be just something for the veterans.
I don't have a problem with that.
Good?
You're good?
Definitely.
So yeah, I would, I mean, we have a company we work with, the main event website.
Right.
So I would probably get your ideas and talk to them about how best to...
Yeah, we can do it soon.
Figure it out. Okay, great, that's a good one. Perfect, excellent.
Mike, I might back off for one.
Yeah?
This demand letter that we received previously from Martin in Hippel and then this action against the O'Brien estate, is Derek cognizant of this?
Uh, yes, he's, yeah, I'm pretty sure he is. Chief Young has, has been communicating about the whole thing. And so I, and he was, he was very cognizant the last time around when they sent notice to the town about possibly suing the town and individual members of the board.
And if we gave him $68,000 in support of this?
Yeah, correct. So it's, I mean, he's, he's, he's pretty much aware of, of the issues. And per the material that Chief Young had provided, I, I don't think their complication is going to help a lot of Eric with respect to the estate of Lieutenant O'Brien and stuff. But, you know, we'll, we'll just keep a price of it because there's nothing forward as we're to do it at this time. All right, anything else on those? There it is. We received, we received this today, a stone wall removal agreement. I haven't had a chance to look at this. Did you guys drop this off today?
No, it was submitted tomorrow.
Oh, okay, I think, I think Sue received this today.
Or it might have gone to Derek actually.
Oh, okay. I haven't had a chance to look at it.
I have, yeah.
So if you guys are fine with this?
That's fine.
Everybody has a copy though, so we'll review it and then discuss it next meeting. On the same lines, so the building permit application. The Vernings have put in a building permit application. The permit would be a process of converting the existing barn to living quarters on the property, raise the existing house at some point, and then build a garage on the property. This is all in the residential parcel. As part of that, obviously the building inspector comes into play. And the permit was submitted. The request was made to not have Larry Shaw be the building inspector. We asked the deputy building inspector, Jack Steiner, who recused himself from that. We then went and asked Newmarket, whose building inspector was doing the building work. He did not want to do this inspection or perform any of the building inspection services. Exeter said no, Portsmouth said no, Stratton said no, and North Hampton said no. At this point in time, I can continue to look for municipalities, but my guess is municipalities, I mean, it's a, all the building inspectors know each other. And they're going to ask each other, and my guess is it will continue to get objections. I'm more than happy to go down that path, but it, I don't know when somebody's going to say yes.
Yeah, I mean, to clarify, I have a voicemail from, because I had started the process trying to keep it separate from...
Are you the builder?
I am the builder. I'm sorry, I'm the builder, I go after it. So I had submitted the application, basically the homework of anyone we want to. I had a voicemail from Larry recusing himself and he said that. We never asked that, I never asked that. I'm not sure what the next step would be if people continue to not help, so...
My suggestion is, and I'm more than open to other ideas, but if the town can go out and get a third party, basically hire somebody to act as a building inspector. But I would, I would push the cost of that back on, on the property owner or you.
I mean, I... I understand part of that, but wouldn't the burden be on the town since the both of them recuse themselves?
I'm sorry, are you saying you now want Larry Shaw to come and inspect?
No, I'm saying that, like, we, we, we can hear him recuse himself, Larry Shaw.
Well, we can, we can, as, as his boss, we can have him do the work.
What about this backup?
The deputy recuses himself.
Yeah.
He has conflict, he sits on one of the boards that...
I'm not trying to...
I understand, but he said, it's a valid, it's a valid recusal of him because he sits on one of the boards where this may come before the, the board.
Yeah.
So he, he, you know, from that standpoint, he recused himself.
Yeah.
If you want Larry, then we'll have a conversation with Larry. But given all of this, I, from a timing standpoint, you tell me, you don't want Larry, you don't want Larry. We'll go and hire somebody, but given all of the municipalities who have been rejecting this, I, I don't think at some point this doesn't become the town's responsibility. It's not the town's fault that every municipality owner is rejecting...
I mean, I understand that, but just, you know, like, we're, you know, it's not illegal what we're trying to do. We're trying to split four...
Oh, that's what he does.
And then if the town, code enforcement, and the second guy recuses himself, then what are we to do?
It's not what I'm understanding that Larry was the first to...
I accused, I have, I mean, I have a voicemail from him. I called before we submitted the permit, I called to talk to him, to talk to you about that. I still have, I can play for it if you want to. But it's, 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 it's him saying it has to do with Vernings, I refuse myself and so doesn't the other guy recuse himself on this. I mean, I understand the previous issue, but like, this is something separate from the farm, you know? I don't understand why this, like, say, if we can work something with Larry and his assistant to do something, whether Larry views it, assistant does something, I mean, I don't want to work with him.
If you, if you want to have that conversation with Larry...
You want to talk with him. So it's not, it's just that...
Do you, well, I'm asking directly, do you want us to have Larry do this work?
I mean, we need someone to do it. So and I'm, I'm open to, you know, I just want to keep the ball rolling forward. I'm open to a third party and we can discuss the cost as far as whether to split it or we put it or whatever. I mean, I feel like, to be fair, it should be, you know, I feel like it's the town's burden. And obviously you, you're feeling different, but if both of your employees refuse themselves, then...
Go ahead.
There's a history of Larry, Larry was told when the building was going in that he was not going to be the building inspector, which it is the purpose of the town to determine who the building inspector is. Then when this application came in, it also stated in the application that Larry was not, you did not want Larry to be the building inspector. So we have a building inspector that you were rejecting. Your, that's, that was very clear in the documents.
In addition to that, over the last several weeks, I have made a good fake effort...
Oh, yeah, I understand, yeah, oh, no, that, that.
To try to do this so that, you know, a municipality would basically provide, you know, services.
I guess the, the next step move forward is to, you know, if we get a third party inspector who does, you know, whoever that may be, and do they review all the permits? Or is Larry still reviewing everything? Like, I just want to know, typically I go all over the CTOs, like, I want, I want to know who I'm going to go to, trip, talk to, ask questions. Because I have a lot of questions about the feedback I got from the permit submitted that wasn't reviewed yet, that I just, you know, need, want clarification on.
Of course.
So I just need, we need to figure out if it's, you know, it's a third party, then let's go with a third party.
Yep. I, I would, I would suggest, and again, I'm more than happy to have a discussion about this. I would suggest that the town will find a third party to act as basically, you know, contract with somebody to do the building inspection service.
That's fine.
Whoever that is is going to have to work with Larry to ensure that, you know, the town requirements are being met.
Yeah.
They know what those...
Oh, I understand, yeah.
And again, I'm, I'm just, so we're all clear on that.
I'm completely fine with being able to go meet with Larry, talk about it. We, we're all professionals here.
At the end of the day, most of this will probably be a joint effort between you and the third party building inspector with Larry basically playing the backrattle just to make sure that from the town's perspective, the boxes are being checked.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, no problem with that.
Okay.
So I think that's probably the way.
Okay.
Third party and we discuss the cost and it is what it is, you know? I just want to know.
No, and again, I, no, again, I, I've tried to move that sufficiently. Unfortunately, nobody wants to, to do this work.
Yeah, understood.
So, so with that, then I, I'll make a recommendation that the town go and contract with a third party. Obviously, we need to make sure that they have knowledge of the building codes. There were two recommendations made. One was Caleb Fields, the other one was Heat Engineering. I don't know if you know either of those.
Yeah, I know Heat Engineering, yeah.
Okay. I, I know Caleb's here in town. I think given the situation, it may be as arm's length as possible, maybe the better choice here. If you know Heat, do you guys have a problem with us approaching Heat?
No, no.
Do you guys, I don't know if you guys have any other ideas or suggestions about this?
No, but we need to discuss the cost issue now and make sure it's straightforward.
I have no idea, well, I was about to ask.
Well, no, not, not that a dollar, but who's bearing the cost for this?
Yeah, well, let us know on, on, on that point.
We don't know who costs it.
I know, but do you have a ballpark about what it might be?
I don't know, I mean, I think it's probably...
This is not my favorite.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's, you know, he's going to discharge, you know, time for... I mean, I feel like he helps a meeting with Larry, but most of his time is just going to be inspecting.
The inspections itself, yeah.
So it's probably going to be maybe $400 or $500 an inspection.
Okay.
So maybe a couple thousand dollars, whatever the inspection.
Okay, all right, that'll give us an idea.
I think so, you know, that's...
No, and we'll reach out to Heat Engineering and try to get that? And then, and then, you know, will, before we do anything, I think it probably makes sense for us to call you and say, this is what Heat has quoted here. And just to make sure that you are okay with that.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'll have to go ourselves out.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, like I said, I'd rather, I want to move forward, so. We don't want to drag that out anymore. Like I said, I don't want to work with anyone, you know, I'd love to meet Larry and talk to him about different stuff and, you know, we're all, like I said, we're all professionals here, so.
So to your point, any thoughts on what your preferences are for all of this?
That sounds like a proven course, I just get it so it's in black and white or some confusion.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, obviously, like, I could argue all day, like, the cost of our, or whatever. I mean, I would love to be able to, you know, maybe split the cost of the town. I do feel like someone that does burden on the town, I mean, before that application, before the permission letter that we sent, Larry, we sent you the voicemail, and I can prove the dates. So if we split the cost 50/50, you know, I'm open to suggestions. I mean, just trying to save exponentially, you know, so long, lots of money.
Mike, comments, questions?
So I'm kind of new to this.
Yeah, yeah.
Been a job a few weeks. But they may give reasons why they're turning down doing this work. I mean, do we know why so many have turned it down? That's kind of my question.
I mean, I've, I've...
Go right ahead.
I spoke with David Evans in Newmarket, the guy who's new straight, and I was hoping that he would do it. I mean, he, you know, they kind of, like, the way he said it, or the way he described it, he helped out Newfields with the situation with the, you know, building provider and that, you know, that was kind of like their good deed that if they needed someone, they could call Newfields and they could come, but he wasn't looking to be the person. Because I, I asked him, you know, even if it was a cost to try to get them to come, you know, just anybody, rarely.
Pardon me?
That's pretty much it, that's what I would want. Really don't want to be the personal...
In, in terms of my discussions with the other municipalities who reached that too, you know, I, I discussed with them, our need, described it as a residential project. The fact that our building inspector and our deputy, you know, put in terms of they're not available to do this. Each and every one of them said, well, let me do my homework, get back to you.
Yeah.
They called me back usually a day or two or three later and said, you know, we are not going to be able to do this.
Yeah.
I did not press as to the rationale why.
Yeah.
You know, I, for me, it's, you're not going to do it, you're not going to do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, if, if, if there's an underlying issue, I don't know where anything specific, nobody mentioned anything specific.
Yeah.
My guess, building inspector talked to them, right? They all know each other here, it's not...
Yeah, I mean, what we're trying to do is prove it forward. I mean, we already built the code and that's, that's it. You know, going through the motions, proper motions. So I, I don't see an issue as far as coming from a, you know, code standpoint. I do this every day, so, but I don't see an issue from that. You know, we're married, we're supposed to do, going through the process. They ensure everything is perfect and, you know, so that's kind of my next question.
Yeah.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, it's just from the facts, you know, but I, I was trying to, you know, separate it, keep everything separate from Vernings and the farm and, you know, Vernings itself. Just keep it, you know, as easy as possible.
Mm-hmm, okay.
My take on the cost, whether it should be shared, I mean, I think the town has their opinion on why Larry Shaw should, should not be refused from using, be on our property and Vernings and the farm has its opinion on why Larry Shaw should... Farm has a opinion on why Larry Shaw should, should not be allowed on the property, and I think as a taxpayer of the sound, like, you know, our voice deserves to have some weight and the burden of that cost should be solely on our shoulders. The reason Larry Shaw was asking for, for us to come on our property is because we feel that we have value to request that, and because we feel like he's not a, a non-biased person who's out there. So, I think that has some weight that should be considered.
Understood, I mean, again, the request was made dealing with the pavilion.
Yeah.
And the town actually asked for that. When the permit came in and so we, we did out, that request was also made.
Yeah, but I mean, if we deal with facts, okay, like, before I submitted any permit, I, like, I always do.
Well, then, I understand what you're saying, but wait a minute, wait a minute. If, if what you're saying here is you don't want to pay for, then we can go and have Larry do it.
No, I'm saying that I think it should be a shared cost. Like, I'm saying I want to go fifty-fifty, like, it's two thousand, the town takes a hundred thousand a week. I mean, I do feel like it's the town's burden to supply someone to do that. I mean, I, I had a voicemail personally from Larry Shaw saying he refuses himself of anything on the property, and I also, so I don't know, like, you're being his boss, I don't know if you can make him, but I also know the request came in later, so therefore, I feel like it's a share, it could be a shared cost. Obviously, I want to move forward and don't want to drag anything out, but I do feel like that is fair.
Understood. Well, my suggestion is we'll reach out to heat.
Figure out.
We'll, we'll get the cost, have a conversation back with you, see if you can come to terms.
I think that's, that's.
Does that make sense for a person?
Yeah, I think that's completely fair.
Okay, great.
Awesome, thank you.
Not a rush. Uh, anything else?
Not, not really.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, primary minutes, so we had the minutes from, uh, May sixteenth that we deferred from last time, I hope you guys had a chance to review guys. Any comments, questions, edits changed?
Good.
Great, uh, I'm making sure to accept the minutes for May sixteenth.
Sir.
All fair?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, you have the minutes from May thirtieth, we'll do the same thing, you guys have a chance to read them and then we'll get back to those.
Okay.
Uh, any other open business?
Uh, I want to give an update on, um, couplings this week for the conservation committee. Um, there's been, uh, recommendations for the management plan update through the, discussing pre-reed management advisory committee. So, I received this, um, something, and, yeah.
Is this the Bob Elliott request that went through Kuchar and, great?
Um, I don't think so.
Because Bob Elliott was looking for the master plan?
Yes, and I, yeah, but I don't think, and this is update, this is about dates in the management plan.
Okay.
Well, that's actually, and that was.
Yeah.
And I think that was the other thing that he was looking for, I was just trying to try to get.
Okay, yep, so, um, so I want to let you guys know this is out there, I'll forward it to you guys on the email, so you can read it whenever, whenever you have a chance, I think you'd have time to go, uh, through that tonight. Um, and then, there was, uh, I didn't know if I could, um, there was also a request, um, that the, um, conservation commission to have Burnham Family Farm at the next conservation meeting.
Oh, okay, great, when is that?
That is, I believe, the twenty-sixth. Keisha, is that right?
This, this month?
June, June twenty-sixth.
I don't know what's up.
Okay, I got it. I'll take a look.
Are they coming in?
Uh, I haven't seen an email back yet.
Okay. Um.
But I want to just keep.
Well, it certainly makes this kind of long move a primary.
Uh, yeah.
Because it's going to be related to.
Exactly.
Discussions.
It is the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, great. Is that a Monday?
It is.
Oh, I'll be back, excellent. I'll be back. I'll put that in the calendar right now. June twenty-sixth, at seven P.M.?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, it's not the, it's not the June meeting, it's July meeting.
Oh.
Sorry, July seventeenth at seven P.M.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. July seventeen at seven P.M.? Uh, I think I'll be there. I'm going, I mean, July, okay, great, so, all right.
So, the updates out from conservation.
Hold it.
Yeah, uh, were you done, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I've talked to Jeff Finster about microphones and improving quality of sound, he's got a couple options, he's working on that.
Great.
So, that'll be in the queue there. Um, and then, then I also talked to the, uh, town hall streaming to do.
Town hall streaming, yeah.
To do every town meeting, unlimited town meetings, would require another hundred dollars a month for the duration.
Okay.
And you referenced last time that we have to be able to budget that for the balance of the year, but I think that would be improved, if we can't do it this year, do it this year to add.
Because about to finish, yeah.
For the start of following years.
Yeah, yep.
Uh, I have to change my schedule when you get to meeting dates, if we want to look at that.
We'll do that right now?
Yeah, I have to change my schedule too.
Oh, you.
Sorry.
No worries.
So, July, we can do it by then?
Yeah.
And I will be in town also on the twenty-fifth.
I will not be in on the eleventh now. Sorry.
So, he'll be here, you won't.
That's right.
Which fucking body?
I was at twenty-fifth, okay.
I think that's okay.
Uh.
Yeah, that's okay with me, I'm looking July twenty-fifth.
I may not be here, but don't let me stop you guys from holding a meeting.
Well.
I, I can't make every meeting.
I know, well, I, but I think you two guys, without me, is probably.
No, well, we, one person involved in this, so, so don't worry about that.
Do you want to attend it for the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, let's put it down for the twenty-fifth, again, summer's usually light.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think we have anything moving down the pipe that is, you know, must do now, but while we leave the twenty, July twenty-fifth is an, uh, is an open date.
Okay.
Oh, I mean, here's something, the article.
The eleventh? Uh, no, I think we should hold the eleventh, because we're not doing, are we doing, we're not doing number one this month, correct?
That is correct, that's right.
Yeah, so we'll do the eleventh.
Eleventh and the twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, just put the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. That'd be great.
No, there's one more thing, Michael.
Shoot.
Where are we, noise monitor?
So, uh, we've been doing, uh, putting the noise monitor, uh, noise meter up on Thursdays and collecting it afterwards, um, it basically takes, every ten seconds it logs sound, um, we've been pulling those into, uh, basically spreadsheets, um, so, and I've been putting them up, Patterson's allowed us to put it on their, um, property boundary, so that's where it is now, um, I'll probably do a couple more weekends with the Pattersons, but I'd like to move it around to other property owners as well.
Okay, okay, because I've seen the Patterson's data and it's exceeding sixty-five?
Uh, on occasion, yes, yep.
Well, it's more on occasion when the band was playing on Saturday, there it was. Uh, for what it's worth, I just think we need to make sure we stay on top of this.
Yeah, we're, we're doing it every weekend.
And then the plan as far as the rest of it?
Well, we'll have to collect enough data that actually make, uh, you know, a, a informed judgment about whether there are issues here that need to be addressed.
Okay.
Um, I think the more data we collect, the, uh, more informed, the better positioned we are.
And I agree with that.
As opposed to, you know, uh, again, um, if, for two minutes they were over the sixty-five, but, you know, over the two hours standard, it was only two minutes.
Right.
I think that's important to know.
Yes.
Um, versus, you know, for an hour and a half, they were, it's, it's a big difference. So, uh, I think it's important that we get enough data to be able to properly evaluate it, um, before making any determinations, which is also why I want to go to the other property owners, um, and, and see if I can, I can set up, uh, and do some monitoring there as well.
Okay. And for clarification, because I've been asked about this, noise complaints go to the police department, there's no decimal reading for the noise ordinance in town, and any noise issues with decimal readings come to the sled board.
Correct.
And the others to hurt their family farm.
So, um, under the, um, the, uh, building codes, there's specifics for, uh, decimal readings, uh, and I was generally allowed to propagate more than, you know, for a residential low sixty-five, that's property boundary.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's the, um, you know, that's really what we're, we're going to have an evaluation based on.
Sorry, I hope you're reading that?
I'm good.
Good, um, I did have one, I think, the, uh.
Yeah.
You said we're going to work on fireworks ordinance?
Yeah, I asked Jeff, um, Jeff Buxton, she buxted, um, so we have no fireworks in town. Uh, the fire marshal has asked all the towns to do something, even if it's putting in, uh, we do not require permits for fireworks.
Okay.
Uh, there's maybe two dozen towns that have restrictions on fireworks, uh, another thirty that, uh, basically allow permits, and then almost everybody else does nothing.
Right.
Uh, we're one of them. And, um, so I, when Chief mentioned this, I asked that he basically see if he can get us the language, um, that other towns use for fireworks, and, um, once we get that, we'll try to work at it. And obviously, these are not for commercial fireworks, these are, you know.
Right.
Fly for the roaming candles and bomb rockets. But you haven't got an end meeting back yet.
Okay.
On that, I mean, when we'll get it, we'll, and again, in order to do that and actually put it into effect, we'll have to do a series of public hearings, um.
Right.
To, to follow the process.
Okay.
Did we have any outstanding stuff on this, did we already do this thing?
Uh, the audit question?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I went in and worked with Donna and Sue and.
So, we're all square.
Yes, yes, we're all square. We, we took, took an hour or so and walked down the questions, um, on all of that stuff.
Okay.
It's, um, and actually, part of that is the policy that you've been looking at is, you know, part of things coming out of the discussion for the auditors, you know, we need to enact a.
Of the impact, you're supposed to do this one.
Um, well, there's, there's stuff about, um, no, the policy that we just got, uh, credit cards and I.T., part of that's coming out of the audit of just as, as, you know, things that we need to address going forward.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, what else?
That's it. That's all I got.
Yes.
Apologize for not being attentive.
No, not quite right.
I know, okay, you're, you're waiting on, uh, I'm here to submit a formal written complaint.
Sure.
Thank you.
For the signings at the Burnham Family Farm? Okay.
I realize I'm being uneducated and.
No, not a problem. Let us take a look at this, well, obviously, we want to look at, uh, the Dr. Gray permit, the, uh, the ordinances, the, um, uh, and everything else, uh, but we'll have it on the gym for the next meeting.
Perfect.
If that works for you.
Perfect.
Appreciate you having it, Scott.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other, anything else you want to add?
Uh, I just wondered what, um, if you, if you, your board is under the Robert's Rules of Order, or help that you adopt the special set of rules.
Then, uh, so, I believe it or not, under, under the state statutes, there are no formal rules for how a board of selectmen operates, um, this, it doesn't follow Robert's Rules of Orders, um, and in fact, um, little known, the board itself is basically open to the public as required in the statute, but we're not required to even have the public participate. Uh, except for, uh, if, for example, we're doing a public hearing on an ordinance, the public is required to be able to participate. But technically, we can hold an entire meeting and never, and as much as people wanted to participate, under state statutes, we're not required to use it, have anybody else.
That's, that's how I understand, so, I, the only reason I was bringing this up is because I've been here before and I've seen some of the video, um, uh, stuff, uh, and the decorum needs some improvement, in my opinion.
Um, and I, I assume you're talking with, the, the planning board meetings were the ones that I think probably were the, uh, least decorum?
Correct.
That all falls under the purview of the chairman of that particular body, um, and certainly, we've had issues here, I've tried to, um, I don't want to say discipline, but be more direct with people who are not, uh, properly attending meetings here, I'm going to try to continue to do so, um, I've been open for the public participation and I encourage public participation, I don't want to dissuade that in any way, shape, or form, um, um, and so, I don't want to say it's a fine line, because I think you're right spot, um, you know, there are times that some meetings right here, uh, probably were a little too rambocks, um, but for any, any chair or anybody who, uh, wants the public to participate, it's, they got to basically kind of know where to draw it on, um, certainly something I'm conscious of, uh, I think the select board meetings for the most part have been, uh, a little better than the planning board meetings, yes. I think, but I'm not chair of the list.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, I, I just wondered if, if, if you adopted special rules, um, even bodies, uh, like, where I am in Florida, uh, we have sixteen hundred homes, I was the vice president, uh, when we went to a board meeting, we, you know, everyone can be there, they can hear, but we don't need to let them speak.
Right, is this in here?
So.
It's not a requirement for the select board? Now, by the way, for the planning board, very different, the planning board actually has a lot more requirements for public participation because of the nature of what they do, others and everything.
Correct, so, so then, when you go, go into, uh, certain types of meetings, uh, where we were under Robert's Rules of Order, we can, at the beginning of the meeting, adopt a special set of rules for that particular meeting. So, if you know that something, you know, that somebody is going to be out of control, um, in, in the case down in Florida, we had the sheriff's department at a meeting, uh, they were given a, a gold code word and there was someone ejected, you know, they were totally frightened, you know, we're here to do the legal business.
Yep.
And we're not going to be dissuaded because somebody wants to act up.
Yep. And to that point, I mean, for, the meetings are where we anticipated that there would be a larger crowd than usual, um, and a crowd, not necessarily people of the town, uh, we've had police presence here, um, and we'll continue to do so, but as I said, the, the meetings themselves are under the purview of the chair of that board, um, so, you know, there is some individual leeway that that chair can have as a stretch.
Just, when they start to get a little rambocks, it's, I mean, I'm back, banging out and bringing back the orders.
I, I understand exactly what you're saying, Joe.
You know, just prefer.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
No, thank you, I appreciate it. Any other business to come before the board?
Oh, I do have one more thing.
Sure.
Um, I talked to Home Service today.
Yeah.
In regards to the rain garden.
Yeah.
Now, coordinating where I mentioned this week.
Oh, great.
And at daytime, look from them.
Yep.
Bill and I are gonna mark out, exactly, I've got a good idea, we'll mark out under the walk.
Yep.
You've got it under the, uh...
Card.
Yep, so we'll get all set for that.
Yeah, and I was, actually, I was, uh, I, uh, we met again on the, on the rain gardens a couple of weeks ago, um, and, uh, one of the issues was the potential for electric conduit under the walkway, but fortunately, there is not.
Put it there.
That wire, that wire actually comes overhead, and then it hits the roofline here, then comes down for a meter, so it, it won't be any issue for, for the rain garden issues, which is good, because if there was electrical under there, and, but it's complicated, it's, it's a good job. All right?
I think that's all I got.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 8:06 PM.
Excellent.
Second by heart, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Hope you can see the 4A again, the rain gardens.
Bill, deserve, in Ry, in Ry Beach. Uh, Ry Beach, I'm sorry.
Should we have a copy of those others sent to Sue, or...
Um, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Um, actually, I'll, uh, I'll make a copy intended to Sue.
Okay.
No big deal.
All right, just a second.
Pointing, Bill, and this is, press list to put on hold. You guys all have a probably the stone wall agreement that we'll, we...
Yeah.
Next time?
Yeah.
Um, Keisha, the policies for signature, I'm gonna hang on to those copies.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll try to bring it back next time.